Dallas, if you'll open us up, please.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening, God. And again, thank you for letting us live in this town, God. I pray tonight that we do everything that would honor you, glorify you, God. I pray we make decisions that will benefit the town, God. Uh, thank you for, for loving us, saving us, and just be our heavenly Father. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have, yeah, we have a request to make sure that all up here speak into the microphone so they can hear us at home. Can you hear us okay? Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Pledge stability. We will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues, and we will avoid personal attacks. So now, we have a public hearing on ordinance number 2025-06. It's an ordinance approving resolution number 2024, 2024-21 concerning project number 45030, loan agreement, pledge revenues, and designation of an authorized representative. Do we have any public input?
Question, opposed?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we need to take action on ordinance number 2025-06, and this is the second and final reading.
If you approve ordinance number 2025-06 on second, final reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number two. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, I do additions. It'll be number 12, and it'll be concerning the question that I'll turn to.
Is that a motion? I mean, are you making a motion to add that?
Yes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number three. Town council approval of the annual financial statements and audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Mr. Brad?
Yes, sir. All right, good evening. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. Um, so would it be okay if I shared my screen? I'll, I'll put the audit up there, and then you guys can kind of follow along with me as I go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me know when you can see that.
We got it.
All right, fantastic. All right, so, um, so first of all, we, uh, I appreciate the, uh, being able to work with the town, uh, for this year's audit, uh, presenting the, the report. And, um, this is, uh, this is the audit was conducted in, uh, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and, uh, as well as government auditing standards. And the goal of an audit is to obtain an unmodified or clean opinion. Uh, this means the auditor believes that the information, uh, serves as a reliable basis, uh, for decision-making. And as you can see in paragraph two, uh, the town did in fact receive an unmodified opinion for this report. Uh, the only reported finding was the annual finding related to, uh, the preparation of financial statements, which is, is very common. Um, on page 10, this is the town's, uh, management, uh, discussion and analysis. Uh, supportive for helping to put the, uh, information, the financial statements into context. Uh, Lisa does a very good job of providing the information on this, and I would encourage you all to read it at a later time. But, uh, because it's based on information that's further on the report, and for the sake of time, we'll move on to page 25. Uh, government accounting standards require, uh, reporting and financial information related to governmental activities in two ways. One is more of a long-term profitability, as seen on this page and, uh, following pages. And the other's more of a short-term cash management. Uh, the funny, um, see, oftentimes, the short-term statements are more pertinent to town councils. So I'll go to page 28. This is, uh, the town's balance sheet. Uh, it shows the three, each major fund the town owns and on the governmental side of things, uh, what they owe, what they own in, uh, the, uh, in the short term. And then, um, next, the net of those amounts, which is the, uh, the fund balance here. Uh, focus your attention on, uh, the general fund and the fund balance. Uh, the sum assigned amount of, uh, $527,000. Uh, this represents the amount of assets, their grades and liabilities. That has no restrictions on it. It's free for spending the town's operations. Uh, a measure of an entity's health is, uh, that we like to point out is if there were no change in operational spending in the town, how long would it take for the sum assigned fund balance to be drained? Um, and you have about two months, which is on the low side of what's recommended. Uh, this is your, uh, statement of revenues, expenditures, and, uh, changes in fund balance. Um, it shows what was earned and what was spent during the year. And as you can see, in, in, in the general fund and the governmental fund, uh, the town earned, uh, $14,000. Just because of, uh, outlay was pretty much netted out against grants and transfers from the discretionary sales tax fund. Uh, other than that, the interest and revenues, um, here and here, uh, were greater than the non-outlay spending. On page 31, uh, we have your utility fund. Uh, this is the statement in net position, which is kind of like a balance sheet, and it shows what's on note in, in the utility fund. Uh, again, we'd like to look if there was no change in operation spending, uh, of the town. How long would it take for this unrestricted amount here, uh, to run out? Uh, and you guys have nine to 10 months. Uh, generally, like, we see around four months. And so in that respect, uh, the town's higher than normal. Uh, there is a plan, uh, from what I understand, to pay down some of the debts. And when that happens, my best estimate will go to around five to six months. This is your, uh, statement of revenues, expenditures for the utility side of things. Um, you see, you had an operational loss of $450,000, but an overall gain of about $600,000. Um, the operational loss was driven in large part by depreciation, which is non-cash expense. Uh, and the overall gain was, uh, driven by transfers and grant monies that were received in the, uh, year. So there's an overall gain of $626,000. The statement of cash flows is like your, uh, your checking account for the utility fund. Uh, we see that, uh, that there was a decrease of about $500,000 in cash. Uh, this was primarily due to, uh, spending on, uh, capital assets, uh, net of what was received, um, from grants. And so that, that was the primary drivers there. You can go to page 52 to look at, uh, the spending on capital assets. And so, um, there, there was, uh, there was a large amount of spending on, uh, on, in the audit year, on, uh, capital assets and capital projects. Um, it's more than 2.3 million. This is on things like sewer repairs, the forced maintenance on Oxford, and then the airpark land approval. Um, and we, we use accumulated depreciation to say how much of the life is left. Um, you have about 50% of the life of your assets in both the governmental activities and about 50% of the business activities as well. Another thing we'd like to point out is, is the debt, um, of the town. And, uh, there's really, outside of, uh, the, the, the only debt that you have are the bonds payable, and that decreased by about $100,000 in the current year. Uh, there, there are other things on here like net pension liability, compensated absences, but those are, are things outside of the city's control, and they're actually determined. Um, on page 71, we have, government accounting standards require, uh, the inclusion of a budget versus actual for governmental funds, not utility, but governmental funds. And as you can see on, uh, the page here, um, adjusted, amended expenditures matched, uh, the budget. So it was, um, we go to page 81. We look at, uh, spending of, uh, federal and state financial assistance. Uh, you spend $846,000 in federal monies and $826,000 in, uh, state monies. Both of these triggered a single audit. Um, and the reports on pages 85 through 94 discuss the results. I'm going to spare you that and just let you know, we're pleased to report that, uh, there were no single audit, uh, related findings in the year. Uh, on page 83, uh, this is a report on internal controls. As a part of our audit, we, we were doing internal controls. And while we did not render an opinion on them, if there's anything that comes up, we, we reference any findings here. Uh, as the report states, uh, there was only one control-related finding, and that, that was related to the preparation of financial statements, which is, like I said, is not a reason, a cause for alarm or anything. It's a very common thing, uh, for towns and cities and citizens. Uh, it's one that, that will probably, uh, continue to occur, uh, in the future. Uh, go to page 95. Uh, this is the management letter. Uh, management letter is, uh, it's required by the state. It discusses the, uh, financial condition of the town and states that, uh, there were no other findings. And, uh, and it would provide, uh, like auditor suggestions and recommendations for the current year. Uh, page 98. Uh, this report, uh, states that in our opinion, the town complied in all material respects with the, uh, Florida statutes related to, uh, investment of public funds. Um, thank you for, uh, for the opportunity to work with you all again this year. Uh, Lisa and Kaylin and the rest of the team did a great job of getting us everything that we, uh, needed for this audit, and we look forward to, uh, continue to work with you all in the future. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion to accept the audit report? Motion to accept their report?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. You all have a great evening.
Yes, sir. All right, item number four. Town council to consider and provide feedback to the Nassau Planning Department as they share the most recent draft of Nassau County Vision 2050. Ms. Wallace?
As you know, Nassau County has been working on updating their Vision 2050 Plan for some time. They've been here to see you a few times for your feedback. They held a public interest meeting tonight at 6 o'clock to engage the public again. And they want to share with you the latest updates to that plan. Ms. Elizabeth and her team, um, have a presentation for you, and I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you, Leanne. Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Back, the Planning Director for the Nassau County Planning Department. And, um, we're excited. Okay, perfect, thank you. We're excited to be here tonight. Um, we're really thankful for all of the feedback we've received, both, um, the last time that Holly Coyle and I were here before, and of course, tonight, uh, for the first hour this evening, um, during the open house. Uh, we've been working for many months, um, over a year to prepare this, uh, Vision 2050 Plan. And so, um, I will let Melissa Bowdre with Half, um, our consultant, come up and, uh, present the slides to you. And then Holly Coyle's Economic Resources Manager, and myself will be happy to answer any questions and, um, uh, receive any feedback that you have. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, as Elizabeth said, my name is Melissa Bowdre. I work for Half Associates out of our Austin, Texas office. But I'm from Nassau County, grew up in Jacksonville and Nassau County and Uly, um, all throughout my life, and lived until my 20s. So it's really exciting to work on a project that has brought me back home, um, in my stepmom's car outside. So, um, we're going to go through this. A lot of this is going to be, um, a little bit of a repeat, uh, very much from what we did earlier. Um, and it was great to get community feedback. And you showed me how to work this, and then I'm still messing it up.
Down is up.
Down is up. There we go. Thank you. So this is an overall project recap. It shows the five phases that the, the county has gone through in this process. And right now, we have really finalized phase four of drafting the plan. That is, uh, what is provided on the website and what we reviewed, uh, during that public meeting here today. And we're in, going into phase five of the adoption process. The major deliverables coming out of this, and the whole goal of the vision plan was to really look at how the county can balance future growth and development with preserving what makes Nassau so special. Um, especially the rural areas out here in, in Hilliard and Callahan, and finding the ways in which we can develop sustainable growth, uh, and, and opportunities for increased vitality for both citizens to live, work, and play, and age in place, as well as for visitors to continue to come and enjoy everything that Nassau has to provide. Uh, throughout this process, we've developed a pretty extensive community memorandum. Uh, there was also the development of the community building blocks, which were based off of a large amount of public input. Then a growth framework was developed to look at, uh, how land uses could be shaped in the future. Uh, those turned into place types and character areas. And then from there, there was the development of, uh, implementation strategies in the form of outcomes and objectives based on those building blocks, and then associated actions and strategies. So we'll review all of that here with you today at the high level.
We have to hand it back to the...
Thank you. That's the other piece you told me. Thank you, sir. Uh, this is just another way to look at kind of this process. It has been a long process the county has, has moved through. Um, and so we are, again, inching towards the end here, um, with adoption in June going before, um, the County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, an overview of the engagement that's, that was done throughout. This does not include this kind of final engagement process that we're going through. The meeting here tonight was the first of, um, three, or the second of four meetings, if you will. We had one that was, uh, in Uly at the county offices last week. Uh, this is the second one here with you all. Then we'll have one in Callahan next week, and one in, uh, City of Fernandina Beach as well on Monday and Tuesday. We'll also be out at, uh, opening of the beaches out, uh, in Fernandina this Saturday. So that's another big opportunity for public engagement. Um, and we were handing out flyers at Shrimp Festival as well. So those are the touchpoints in this kind of final round of public engagement. But as you can see up here, there was a, uh, community-wide survey that was released, um, as well as multiple events that were attended to gain additional public feedback. That's really what helped inform the building blocks, uh, as well as looking at the three different growth scenarios, um, that led to the development of the growth plan. Some of the main ideas that came out of the public engagement, uh, was, and 91% of folks agreed that the future of Nassau County should include historic preservation of unique places. Um, and that there should also be, that they were very satisfied with living in Nassau County. And that's huge to have 91% of folks, um, happy to live here. Um, 82% of people were satisfied with Nassau County as a place to raise children. And overall, they wanted to maintain that small-town feel, wanted to see housing options available for folks of all incomes, um, and look at ways to incorporate nature-based solutions and green infrastructure in the development of landscaping to help absorb, um, heat. As we're in this heat wave that's coming this week. So tho- those growth scenario assumptions that we looked at, uh, with the growth map, uh, this is it kind of showing in the, the number slide. So there are those 100,000 new residents projected to be living in Nassau County by 2050. Um, and so 38% of those are, are needed for, for units. You've got 36,000 are in the entitled areas. So those already developed areas like Wildlight, Tributary, uh, Timbered Tides, and some of the other, um, areas along the 95 corridor. So there is the additional need of 2,000 to 3,000 dwelling units. And that was really the goal of this, is to look at where those, uh, dwelling units could be prioritized, um, across the county. This is also looking at not only dwelling units and where people can live, but also the need for the, uh, right jobs and opportunities for commercial, um, advancements that would be needed to really make sure that Nassau is a place that people aren't just living as a bedroom community and still commuting to other areas, but that they're able to work and live in Nassau County. The three trends on, or the three scenarios you see on the right-hand side are those three maps that I'll show in a minute. This is just them written out of trend incremental and think big. And again, those were all presented for public feedback here with you all earlier in the process into the public. This is a very busy map, but the goal of it is to say that there were a lot of different considerations looked at in thinking through what future land use could look like in Nassau County. Things like wetlands, um, roadways, all the, the, you can see that there's, on the right-hand side, there's each of the community's future land use maps. Um, but also where is their existing development? Where are all of that, where's that infrastructure in place that can really help support future development in a more streamlined way? So where are those facilities already located? Your public service facilities, your roadways, your water and wastewater utilities, things of that nature? So all of that were kind of the baseline, uh, layers that were looked at to think through, um, where the character areas and future land use could be considered. And so these are the three, the three different scenarios. This is the first one, and this is really that kind of business-as-usual trend scenario, as it's called. A lot of that, you can see a, a large amount of yellow, and that is all of that suburban. Um, these are kind of the, again, the traditional one-acre lot suburban developments, um, and even into more rural development as, as has been happening across Nassau County. So this scenario considered just no real change from, um, the county's perspective on future growth, just letting it continue. Incremental is, is similar in nature, slightly different in taking more of, you can see there's kind of a change in that, the amount of yellow, if I can go back. There's a little bit less. Um, and then there's the, the kind of bigger, uh, employment center, that blue that pops up in the middle west of Callahan. Uh, but still, a, a large amount of just kind of continuing as businesses as, you know, normal. And then you can see a big change in the think big. And this is really looking at focusing that growth and development in, uh, along the 95 corridor with bigger density opportunities, preserving the natural and rural areas in Western Nassau, with the opportunities for economic generation and development in these big employment centers, um, both in the southern tip of the county as well as, uh, in that, that big area just west of Callahan. And so this think-big approach is, is primarily what the growth map was based off of. Again, there was feedback given on all three of these scenarios. Uh, and this was the scenario that was voted highest amongst the public and all the feedback that was received. And so the growth map is different than what is presented here, but it was built off of this along with, um, those additional considerations that the county has thought through for, um, for future growth. And that is now here as the preferred growth scenario. The color is a little bit different. It is the exact same. It's just the way that it, uh, is presented here. That lighter gray, or the lighter green, I'm sorry, is, um, the same li- uh, areas of conservation. I did forget to say that on the previous slide, where there's a, there is additional conservation areas preserved in the think big. And you can kind of see that's probably the biggest change to the actual growth map, is a really high concentration of areas to, to have into perpetuity into conservation. And that came from a lot of the feedback from the public is a, a real desire to ensure that those natural areas are preserved. You can also see kind of a, an increase in the employment centers in the southern part of the county, as well as thinking about the potential residential needs to support those, um, economic centers with the yellow, uh, suburban areas in the southern area to support those economic centers, as well as the development of that rural successional zone. So in looking at this town of Hilliard and town of Callahan, we've got the inclusion of the rural town in that coral color surrounding the community itself with the goal of that being a joint planning area so that the county can work with you all as you continue to grow and develop to ensure that it's, you know, we're not just, it's not just putting all suburban, um, residential right there, and you're wanting to expand certain commercial areas or, or whatnot. It's, it's an opportunity to do joint planning. And then that successional zone where you see the, the, um, the lines going down between the two towns, uh, is to continue to allow for that commercial corridor with the red node in the middle, kind of a little button there, is, um, is directly, uh, created for commercial. So the rest of it's really open. We did have a good discussion here during the open house about, um, the agricultural land that is south of that rural town area, south of Hilliard. Uh, there is the opportunity for that to definitely stay agricultural. None of what is presented here would designate a change of, uh, of that land going from its current use. So it is, uh, open for that joint planning well into the future with, with the town. Anything else to add there? One of the key components to the, the growth map, and it, these, uh, roadway connections are shown on the growth map itself. They're just a little bit hard to read. So this map is just showing, is taking away all those land use character areas and just showing the roadways. So the roadways that are the kind of heavier dotted line are roadways that are, were included in the mobility plan. Some of these roadways are already constructed, um, and some of them are future construction. And then the fainter dotted line, kind of double dotted line, are potential future roadways to think about, uh, in the consideration of the, the land uses that were looked at in the growth plan. So these are farther out potential roadways. Uh, it does not designate that these are already in development per se today, but that they are things to consider. If these big economic centers were to be developed in the southern part of the county, how do we connect those to the parts of Western Nassau so that they aren't just connecting to Jacksonville, but they're connecting to the rest of Nassau County as well? Things like that are thought through in making sure that we're creating those connections in utility lines and in roadways to, uh, create that connectivity across the county. This map here shows, uh, the potential for a transfer of development rights program. This is very high level and just something that the county is, is considering at this time. We are in the vision plan process, so it is very, the, the goal is to put everything out there and think through what is possible. And this would be an opportunity for as areas of the county are growing and developing, how it could be offset, um, through the, a transfer of development rights program. Um, so those, those sending zones would be able to, uh, be able to offset and mitigate development into the, the receiving zones. I always get that wrong. Um, but this is again just high level and something that will continue to be thought through into the comprehensive plan phase, the next phase of this overall project. So that's everything on the growth plan. Uh, and now moving to the building blocks. There were eight building blocks that were, uh, developed as a part of this process. And they range from arts and culture and thinking through the authenticity of Nassau County, really getting into the governance, um, and kind of the administrative side of what it means to be, uh, what the, the responsibility of the county is. And then really thinking through things like housing and, and connectivity. What are the, you know, what's the, the meat and potatoes of what it means to have to live in, in Nassau County? Uh, and then looking at opportunity resilience, kind of the big picture and long-term planning. The process was developing, um, building block statements. These are located in chapter five of the plan. So we couldn't put everything on these slides here today, but they are all available in the plan online, um, and here in, in person today. And so the building blocks each have a statement. And then there are several objectives and associated outcomes. And then with each of those objectives and outcomes, there are many strategies and actions that were developed. Uh, these are still somewhat high level because we are at the vision plan stage. But as the county moves into the comprehensive plan stage, those will continue to be further defined and become more actions, um, more, you know, kind of metric, measurable actions. And this is the same kind of format that a comprehensive plan would go through that's required by the state. So that was the goal, was to kind of have this be able to be transitioned into that next phase for the county. And so the next, we're going to show you here is just a screenshot of what is available online, um, for the public to view. The, they can, everyone can go to NassauFL2050.com, and there's a lot of information on there. It's been the website used throughout this entire 18-month process. So you can see a lot of the past engagement that's been done and materials from that. There's a video, a great video on there. Um, and then there's a pop-up window that will come up as soon as you go to the website, and that's that blue view and comment. And, uh, if you click on that, it'll take you to a story map, which is a, um, kind of ArcGIS map-based website that gives more interactive ways for folks to give public comment. And so on that story map page, there's a few different aspects and ways in which people can engage. The first would be where you see, um, that man and, and the young girl there with the share your thoughts. If you click on that yellow box, then it will bring you to a window that pops up the plan itself and provides a box to, um, submit an open-ended public comment, just a general public comment about the vision plan itself. Um, the vision, the public comment period is open until May 23rd, uh, and we welcome all comments. Um, so that yellow box there is for a general public comment. And then there are two ways that, uh, folks can give more specific public comments. And the first is on the map itself. So that, what you see there is a screenshot of the growth plan map that was just shown on the screen. And folks can click on the map itself and leave a comment, either a big idea, uh, which can be just anything that they want to comment on, or if there's a certain part of the map that they really like, they can give a thumbs up and tell us why, or they can say thumbs down and tell us why as well. Um, and so that is, uh, also available online to give that type of public comment and use that interactive map. And then the last way to give public comment is specifically on the building blocks. So towards the end of the story map, if you see kind of that screenshot on the bottom right, it will then go through each of the eight building blocks, all of the objectives and outcomes, all the actions and strategies. Um, it's a lot of reading, but it's good stuff. And at the end of each one, uh, folks can rank that building block, how much they like it, and then they can leave a specific public comment on each building block. So really a lot of different ways to try and, um, hear what people think. We've gotten some good comments so far, a good range of things. A lot of, you know, keep rural Nassau rural, a lot of, uh, continue to grow and just everything in between. So, um, that's, that's really the goal. And I think that's the, the goal that the county has had over this entire process is to find that balance and find that sweet spot that makes sense for, for all of Nassau. And so with that, I'll, I'll open it up to county staff and any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Hold on. We appreciate you coming by and sharing this with us.
We appreciate you coming by and sharing this with us. I'm sorry I was a little late getting here, but you know, I got the most of it while I was here. And I'm sure that if any of the public has any questions, they'll get back with you on it. But thank y'all all for for coming out and showing us this.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, the town council approval of the capital budget expenditure for electrical upgrades to the wetland influence control panel box with PSI technologies and Osprey I E Incorporated, the amount of $15,028.
This panel controls everything that leaves the sewer plant and go to the ponds. Used to be called the spray field to filter out. I spoke with our electrician. We've had a lot of issues. It's been a lot of corrosion in it. It's just, and it's outdated. The problem is we were having a hard time finding parts to match what's in it because it's so old. So it's cheaper really to just buy a new panel and wire it in than to gut that panel out and replace it with all new parts. We've we've had a lot of work done on this panel in the past few months because of just the corrosion aside.
According to three quotes. They didn't offer the panel that Osprey's offering. That wasn't in there.
Osprey didn't offer a panel.
Was it?
They offered the work to just wire it in to install. Like Osprey's like our house electrician that does all our panel work. This is the prebuilt panel with all the guts in it. So and we have money budgeted under capital for electrical upgrades there. And we're not over budgeted at all with this.
Just to be clear, three quotes or four of the panels? He says Osprey is going to install the panels. Three quotes or four of the panels?
So PSI is the ultimate. Motion to approve.
All is in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number six, town council to consider a request for donation and at least not went around for this, but we finally figured it out. It's to the Marine Corps League for the purchase of toys to be distributed at the Northeast Florida Fairgrounds Toys for Tots giveaway.
Bobby had reached out to me and explained that this is something that the Marine Corps that he's part of, the league that he's part of, has been doing for a number of years at the fairgrounds. And he wanted to know since it's getting harder and harder for them to collect all the money in order to provide toys if the town would consider making a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Marine Corps so that they could purchase the toys. And I provided with you his email requesting it after he called me and put it in writing for me. And then also I provided you the spreadsheet on showing you what was budgeted for donations this year and what the balance is in that account. And I'm requesting that this be something that you all consider, sorry.
Well, we did not budget this.
Budget of $5,000 and we've got a balance of 2610 left in it that has not been requested.
Because all the budget is going to be.
Nobody else has. We put 5,000 and it's whoever asks.
Yeah, we didn't have any requests before budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, we only had three people ask for the 5,000, part of the 5,000.
Yeah, and that's where the balance is.
Make a motion to approve $1,000.
I'll second the motion.
All is in favor? Oppose? All right. Item number seven, the town council to accept the resignation letter from Charles Reed of the Planted and Zoning Board effective July 1, 2025, and to instruct the town clerk to initiate the process for a new appointment. Ms. Wallace.
I'm gonna ask Christian's advice on one thing here because I believe that he asked me to change this, except to acknowledge. And I think that I failed to do that on this agenda item report. Accept or acknowledge, Mr. Christian?
I'm fine with either, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But I, yeah.
Okay. So on May 8th, Mr. Charles Reed submitted a resignation letter to myself and Lisa. We acknowledged receiving that in writing. And it's before you to accept it and then for you to initiate a process to reappoint that seat. I do have a zoning board meeting on July 1st, and he has offered to serve at that July meeting. I know at the end of the year, we talked about adopting a resolution to institute a process for when those seats come open every year. Ms. Lisa is writing that resolution for us now. Mr. Reed was just appointed to start in January, and we did have three or four resumes submitted at that time for consideration. So Ms. Lisa and I need some instruction from you. Do you want us to pull those resumes back out, put it on your workshop agenda? And you discuss if you would like to put one of those people that we considered in December to finish out his seat? Or would you like for us to finish the process resolution and then follow that process even though it's midterm? We can do, it's at your discretion. We just need some direction.
Would the process that you're saying to for the council to go through and decide on someone, since his last workshop is going to be in July, will you have enough time to get it to the board so that they can vote on it, vote on whatever the resolution is in July and then have a workshop and then appoint someone the 1st of August?
I don't know. I think you would probably have to adopt the resolution before your July meeting and begin. So when when we talked at the end of the year, what we were talking about, those December appointments for people who start in January and what we were talking about at that time was begin public advertising in the fall, collect resumes and do some interviews in October and November, select a person and appoint them in December. They started in January. We didn't really have a lot of discussion about what happens in a midterm replacement. I think that's what we could call this, a midterm, the need for a midterm replacement. If you want to advertise, let our public information officer do our advertisement through social media, Facebook, things like that, our website for a set amount of time and that be enough. I think you have enough time to do that. If you want to go full newspaper, give people a month to submit. I don't know that you have time to do that and somebody begin in August. We don't know. We haven't reached out to them yet. We were waiting to hear your your advice on on how you wanted to proceed forward.
I mean, I don't think we have enough time to wait for resolution on this one. I think we either take the three we have and discuss them, or I'm okay with social media if we want to put it out there.
I say we threw a resolution on the next meeting, advertise starting now, 130 days to the 1st. We have on our June workshop that's my appointment in July.
I mean, we don't even know that we're going to like the resolution when we get it. We don't know that we're going to improve it actually.
If we don't, we move to the next meeting. We'll still at least be accepting, be accepting resumes from time being. We're going to get, we're going to get resolution at our next workshop.
Yeah, but the resolution is about the process. We'll have already started the process. The resolution is still meaningless for this time. Right? I mean, if we've already started the process, we're not following the resolution because it's not in place yet. We might as well just, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, if we're going to do a resolution and follow, we need to stop, we need to wait for the resolution to even advertise.
So we need this resolution on the workshop coming up? And if we like it, we put it on the next meeting and we start advertising from then? I mean, why do you keep it in the game for 30 more days?
I'm just trying to make sure we have somebody in place. When's the, when's the next workshop?
The 2nd, the 12th of June.
That'll be the workshop before the meeting, our next meeting.
Can we have the resolution written before the next meeting? I know you said y'all are working on it, isn't it?
Um, I I will say, I think it's important to have a full five member zoning board, but I don't currently have anything on my desk that anyone on the zoning board has a known conflict with. So as far as I know, of anything that comes up between now and then, all four members can vote. I would be anxious if I had something that I thought had a conflict. I I don't have anything on my desk currently that I think would cause a conflict that would prevent a zoning board member from voting.
Can we have the resolution written and do a workshop at 6 by the 5th? We could vote on that meeting? Because that would put us, he served until July. We voted on it on the 5th, we can start the process and have some time. We just got to vote in the July meeting for whoever to start in August.
That would be the July 3 meeting. So that gives you a quick trigger on the get somebody to fill the spot and get called up.
If we could, right. If we could do the workshop on the 5th at 6, we'd vote if we're good with the resolution on the 5th at our meeting.
The 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 meeting, the second Tuesday of?
Me the first Tuesday of the month. We're going to meet July 1st.
And he's attending.
And he's going to attend that. He's going to serve at that meeting.
If we have a resolution on the 1st of June and advertise for 30 days, you're running to the middle of the month. And then we're going to have one, two weeks tops. By the time we select somebody, get called up, and if anything big coming up, they're going to do a workshop all this time.
I get it. That's why I'm saying, why wait for the resolution? If we're going to do something, let's just do it.
Then what are you going to do? You might say, accept resumes and go from there?
Yeah. Until we have a resolution, then we'll follow it next time.
And I'm okay doing that, too. It's what we've done in the past.
Right. Let's take resumes, let's advertise right now.
Resumes until when?
And then we workshop, next workshop.
Until our next workshop.
Yep.
Resumes until the workshop. We'll review them at the workshop and move forward from there.
They need to show up at the workshop in case we have questions.
Okay. And would you like me to reach out to the three I have and ask them if they would? Okay.
Yeah, and and still the resolution. That way it's in form.
Well, we need it set up because in the fall, we have to start because we have, we replace zoning board members every December.
Right.
Christian, any issues with that?
No, not at all. I mean, and I would only offer this, I I'm a little skeptical that even if you, for some reason, didn't have someone, you know, ready that the P and Z board is not going to fall off the face of the earth. I I think that whatever you choose is totally fine.
But I still would like to see at the next workshop, we draft a resolution so we can go ahead and get that started.
And I do think that's a good idea because we've been talking about that for a while. So we never know when the next time it's going to, we're going to need it. So I think that's wise.
Okay, so at the next workshop, resumes are due, people in attendance, rough draft of the resolution as well. Okay.
Yep.
And you still have to accept or acknowledge the resignation, please.
Make a motion to accept, Mr. Reed, resignation.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Item number eight, town council to discuss Mr. Timothy Timothy Fisk's public records request. Mr. Fisk has asked to speak on this, so.
Timothy Fisk. 27146, West First Ave, Hilliard, Florida. 32046. I'd like to address my public records request. I think the attorney fees to go over what can and cannot be released out of personal files is quite excessive. I can't believe it takes over two hours to tell someone what they can release out of three files. I think that's almost extortion. But of those files, I have a question. When it comes to Mr. Michaels, it says there's no file when I said that. I wanted a reason if you couldn't give it to me. Is it because there's no separation papers? Or you can't find his personal file? Or is there a state law that says you can't give me something? I wrote it in writing, and she just says there's no file. And I want to know, is there no personnel file, no termination letter? Or if it's due to a state law? And if it was due to a state law, you're supposed to tell me it's state law. That's a fact. So that takes care of number one. For number two. I asked for copies of safety reports on the playground. I'm told it's just visual. There's no documentation? If there's no documentation, how did you know you had to get a welder to pay $5,000 to weld frames up at the park we just tore apart? I don't know. But uh. That takes care of two. For three, it said, I'd like a copy of the account payable for A and then B, who's provided with a listing of all credit cards and who they're associated with. And then I also said that I'd like to see some school files. But um, and then it said the inspections of C, D, and E may include photographing and videoing. Well, I told you I wanted the last year of Ace Hardware transactions and payments as all as this year. I told you why. The credit cards, I'd love to see what you were buying on credit cards. That's public information. It's called transparency. People have a right to know where their money is being spent now. So I get that. One, two. Thought I had another one. I do. Well, that one don't matter because I wanted no copy of the sheriff's apartment, which we don't have a contract. And then the town worth, but I really don't think that's all that great. But there's also, they want to charge me to have a sheriff. Well, I look at town records. I have never threatened anybody. I have never threatened to steal anything. Which brings me to another video. When the video was asked about to look at the files of Ms. Fervis in his head because of a video showing supposedly Alicia had vaping, I do not know that. My daughter saw that. But the video shows me alone in the foyer with the town records that I was supposed to be stealing that day. The town was never in the possession of those town records. And to have me accused of stealing town records and then having the clerk say she's afraid of me when I've never threatened her. I point out her not doing her job. And then here, I have to be allowed to be heard. When I'm nice, you people don't listen. When I yell, you people don't listen. When I brought up on the golf court, well, that ain't on this, so we can't go to that. But I don't believe I should pay and neither the town should pay for the sheriff. If she's that afraid that she needs protection, she should hire it. Come out of her pocket, not the town's. Hers. I have never threatened you, never. Okay. I have never threatened any employee in this town. And I'd love to see the proof that I've attempted to steal town records and why she is so afraid of me. That's it.
I do want to address a couple of his issues. Now, you, one of the things you talked about was the playground equipment, and we don't have inspection reports, but you said that there was a. there was a, a charge for welding, well, we may not have reports, but if our, our park department had, sees that something needs to be done, he has it done, or gets a quote to have something done, there's not necessarily a inspection report that's done on it. On the sheriff's department, one of the requests that you asked for was about the town having a contract with the sheriff's department, and I've seen where it's been said that, well, since the, the town does not have a contract with the sheriff's department, who's actually watching the town, the sheriff's department covers the whole county, there's no town that has, Yuli does it, Callahan does it, Higgy does it, Fernadina doesn't have a contract with the county, the county takes care of police enforcement throughout the county, Fernadina has their own police department, which is a totally different story. The, one of the things you asked about was the payables, well, on the credit cards, payables are public knowledge, that's where you can see where everything's paid for, what we bought, what we done, and there's another one that I take issue with, about you have numerous times, you have accused Ms. Purvis of forging a document or not giving you the correct document on the, on the
Trespass.
The trespass warrant, you were sent exactly what we had, the issue was that when you received it, it was in landscape format, not portrait format, so the only thing that was not on that sheet that you got in that email was the bottom line of that trespass report, there was nothing changed, nothing done, nothing addressed on that, on that warrant.
Can I speak for two minutes?
Oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, before you get to yours, there was one other thing that you were warning, the records on, on Judge, our public, our, our heads of our departments, they don't have a, a performance review that they're, that they're done, so there wasn't a performance review done on him, there wasn't no termination letter on him, or termination on him, that was handled through the council. Okay, oh, I mean, he left or resigned, so there was nothing, I, I, I don't know what you're, what you're trying to find out there, um, that's all I had, did any of the other council have anything on any of this? All right, well, I'll entertain you for a minute. We need you at the microphone, so the attorney can hear.
At the time I asked about the police contract, it wasn't until this year that the sheriffs were allowed to police roads in counties and towns, but that's what I believe.
That, that what you believe is not, not true, because the county has never been said that they cannot patrol.
There's a state law, and it was repealed like the three last year.
I've never heard that.
That says
Hold on, one second, Councilor, have you heard that, that there was a state law? Okay, so you're
All right, and there was something else you brought up that I wanted
I mean, I'll tell you this, I, I'd be a lot happier as a high school student, I would have fewer speeding tickets if that was the case, but
You said something else, and I lost my mind, I'm sorry, but if I can have my two minutes now, I'll leave, because I really ain't feeling great.
Did you say that the loading was five thousand dollars?
I believe that's what I was told.
I pulled the payment, so
I'm not sure, Mr. Wallace, that's what I was heard.
On twelve-eleven, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars paid to Hilton, and also on four-seventeen, it was eight fifty-seven, so that's far off your note.
This sure is, I was lied to.
Nearly three times.
I was lied to.
And that's right here, not here.
But if you allow me just to speak.
Is this about this?
No.
No, sir, we, it has to be at the end.
No, stick around.
All right, do we have any other discussion on this request, and this purpose, have you, have you satisfied what the request that has been asked of you?
Yes, I have, I mean, until he pays the money.
Can you speak up?
I said, yes, I have, and until you pay the money upfront, the deposit, I can't have you in the building looking at records.
I ain't paying for a sheriff, and I ain't paying for a lawyer, and I don't know, if I'm paying for lawyer's fee, I should be present.
Yeah, I don't know what that means yet, if you're paying for a lawyer, yeah, you're gonna be present.
Yeah, if she
And she did not say that you would not be present.
I should be present for what party you're charged for.
Okay, we can have a mic, that's, that's fine, we can talk.
Well, and just to clarify, I mean, this is a deposit, so if it doesn't end up taking that amount of time, whether on the staff's side or the attorney's side, that money is returned, so those are, those are just estimates.
And that's clearly stated in the email.
Okay, so we're just waiting on, we'll wait on Mr. Fisk to pay his share before we give him all the information that he's requesting.
I'm done, I'm not up to getting that up yet, until the end of the show.
Okay, do we have any other discussion on this item? All right, item number nine, town council approval of amendments for the May first, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and the May eighth, twenty-twenty-five workshop, all those in favor? Opposed? Item number ten, town council approval of ADCom Technical Services Incorporated payable through May second, twenty-twenty-five project name, environmental assessment for the north and south property acquisition at the Hilliard Airport in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eleven, town council approval of PQH group payable through May fifth, twenty-twenty-five, project name Hurricane Shelter Community Center Project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number twelve, the West Nassau Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Michaels.
Yes, sir, several years ago, we had a Chamber of Commerce on the west side of the county, and unfortunately, it went away, and now it's been reinstigated, and we've got a lot of excitement, we've had two meetings, first meeting, we had sixty-five people, and the last meeting we just had was around forty, so we're, I think that's something that the town would be involved, that's a group we're involved before, and I'd like to see the town join.
What's, what's that entail, Judge?
Uh, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, and then just go out and pay for it.
You want to make the motion?
I'll make that part of the motion.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, public comments.
We'll give you three and a half minutes.
We need a city manager, all right, you really need someone overseeing these people, because you all will be getting an email from me soon, and when you read it, and you look through the PDFs, you're gonna wonder, I'm just saying, you're gonna wonder, because I'll be backed up with proof, okay, Mr. Michaels, I wish you would resign right now, I have someone to take your seat, and it ain't me, it ain't me.
How about four times?
Because I don't want to be up there, there's, the way this town is run, we can't do anything without being socialist, you don't get a government handout, you can't repair nothing, something needs to be done about fiscally responsible, most of you think you're Republicans, but when you're up there running this town, I really think you're liberals, looking for a handout, I'm a socialist, I'm on social security and food stamps, and the government pays for my health insurance, so I'm a socialist, but I hate them, but you people definitely need, you need a town manager, and, and overseer, and maybe invest three hundred dollars inside a set of, for seven volumes of the twenty-twenty-four Florida state statute laws, and then maybe you won't need three hours to talk to a lawyer what you can release, public records is only about that thick in that volume, you know, if you want to borrow them, let me know, I got them.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other public, public comments, this head?
I just want to take a moment, sorry, public comment, Alicia Head, two-seven-three, two-four-three, Murray Road, Hilliard, Florida, I want to take a moment and say sincerely thank you to each and every one of you that are up there, serving in our local government is one of the most selfless roles a person can take on, is often long hours, tough decisions, and very little recognition, but your dedication to this town does not go unnoticed, whether it's showing up to these meetings, listening to people's concerns, or helping shape the future of our community, you do it with a sense of duty that deserves more gratitude than you probably ever will receive, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you for being some of the most dedicated public servants I've ever known, this town is definitely better because of you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir, on the name. You know the routine, name and address.
David Lewis, four-seven-five-nine-one-nine, Middle Road, Davis, Florida, I just, on behalf of the veterans of foreign wars, Post One Zero Zero Nine Five, just outside the city limits on the other side of the road over there, but I just want to thank the mayor and all the councilmen for allowing Alicia Head to, to head up the wall that we had coming, the Vietnam Chamberlain Memorial Wall, just from the bottom of our hearts, at the VFW, the, I mean, the gratitude that, that we feel towards y'all, letting, letting Alicia head that up for us, and, and the, all of the behind-the-scenes works that, that y'all did, you know, and to help us, the, there's nothing more important than, than veterans that's going on before us, that's been killed in action, and for us to honor them is very heartfelt, I just wanted to thank y'all personally, from me, and from the VFW in Hilliard, and on behalf of all the veterans in District Six, the veterans of foreign wars, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. And I think y'all are having a luncheon Saturday for all the veterans, or all the volunteers?
That's right, Mayor, this Saturday, starting at twelve, we're gonna have a voluntary appreciation dinner at the post, so everybody's welcome to come on by, it's gonna go until we run out of food, and, but, but thank y'all for everything you did, so, thank you for reminding me, that's what I got up here to talk about.
All right, thank you, thank you, anybody else? Saying none, Mr. Wallace?
I do want to thank Charlie for his service in the town, he's done a lot, and he misses oh-nine, you know, it is tough making a citizen sometimes, and, so I appreciate him setting up a building out for the town, and he can be with Skip, he seems to be healing well, he's a real good spirit, I called and talked to him the other night, and, so I think we're coming along good, and I do want to thank everybody, I know I went to the last meeting, but there's more volunteers and more people than I can ever say thank you to indefinitely, I don't ever leave anybody out, but the veteran wall was a big deal, it turned out extremely well, and everybody helped, and gave it out in town, from the county, it didn't matter, everybody came together, for my veterans, and it all turned into one really big event that I'm, I'm glad we as a town were able to invest in something that paid back, and that's part of our job, is to give back, and I'm glad we were able to do this.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Michaels?
Well, Gabe is getting ramped up for opening up that pool, and I know there's a bunch of kids waiting to get in it, today was summertime in Florida, flag football, signups be coming along, and everything over there is looking good.
He's doing the last makeup day for soccer tonight, is the reason he's not here.
Yeah.
And then pool will open next Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Hunter?
Nothing else.
Mr. Vicki?
See, the end, family, the prayers, Jared said a mouthful, everybody has it so far, so that's it for me, I apologize for what I did.
Mr. Sands?
I agree with Jared, sentiments on the, on the wall, and, and I just want to say how thankful I am for this, this whole council, and for all the town employees, and what, what we have to endure sometimes from some of the citizens, and I, as wrong as I feel like it is, everybody's right to their opinion, has a right to their opinion, but I, I, we take it, we take it on the chin, and we take it in stride, some people get it a lot worse than others at times up here, but I just, you know, I just want to say, as the council president, how proud I am of y'all for everything that you have to put up with on a weekly basis, and take it in stride, and I just appreciate all of your free service, and, all the employees that are having to put up with some of the same stuff, and thank y'all very much for taking it on the chin.
Not giving up.
Okay, that's all I got.
Um, the sentiments are, are the same for me, for Skip, for Ms. Wallace, you know, what the town employees go through, and I'm sorry with my outburst if I, you know, made some people mad on what I was saying tonight, but, you know, I, I, I feel that, you know, we're in the right on what we had proposed to, or, or shown, um, I do want to say, our Food Truck Friday, two weeks from tomorrow, that's gonna be the one in May, live music, so come out and enjoy the day, the pool opens next weekend, June meetings, I will not, I know I will not be here, the, probably either meeting in June, and I'll be in surgery June second, and then another thing is, I just want to congratulate my granddaughter, I was, I was out today out at the ball field, they had the softball recognition, and she won the MVP of the middle school team, and outstanding player of the year for the JV team, so I, you know, you know, some kids never get recognized, but I'm, I'm proud of her, um, that's all I've got, Mr. Hobbs?
I've had two quick things, um, one is the cat generator, luckily we're ahead of hurricane season, rain power finally got to parts in, so hopefully after, in the next week, it'll be back on, like, it's still working, but it'll be fixed a hundred percent, and then two, I know we had a lot of systems call about the issue on Third and Oxford, where all the, we tore out the pavement, I'm working on quotes for that for y'all, so at the next meeting, I should have that, to hopefully get approved and get that manhold fixed, they can.
You need to call your money for one of those, too?
I think we have enough, I talked with Lisa earlier, we should have enough in capital to cover that, no problem, it's, it's gonna be a cost repair, but we don't have to excavate, we don't have to shut nothing down, they fixed it inside, so just wanted to keep y'all up to date.
All right, is that it, sir? Ms. Purvis? Ms. Purvis?
I just wanted to let everyone know that, and I'm sure Christian's already got this because I know John has, but Aaron Bean called so excited to tell me about the $585,000 that we received today. And actually, I was working on it, and what that is, is to reimburse us for the land acquisitions at the north end of the runway. We had used our AIP money and DOT money, and this was the bill money. And during COVID, we were going to get five years' worth, and this was four years' worth of that money. So next year, we'll get another contribution, but we're finally now received all that money back. I should be able to draw it down by next week. And then my last thing is, from the audit being delivered tonight, you all now know that we are fiscally responsible.
Is that it, Ms. Purvis?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, staff. Thank the town for being fiscally responsible. I know that there's a lot of towns throughout the state and throughout the country that are having trouble paying their bills. We're not one of them. Counselor?
There is one thing. So as you may recall, you authorized us to file suit against a contractor called ADB for damaging some of our utilities' infrastructure recently, and we did file that lawsuit. But they were a subcontractor. They're the ones who actually, we think, caused the damages, so we sued them directly. But we received a claim for payment from their boss, the contractor on the project, for the payment of $10,000. I honestly don't understand and what the basis for the claim is, but frankly, I'd like to sue them along with the subcontractor because I don't know if we care where we get the money, and they had a duty to supervise. But I'm not sure that's necessarily the best course of action. I just, they're making the claim, and they've got a lawyer out in Oklahoma who sent us a letter about this. He's not authorized to practice in Florida. It's just a threat, and if we don't pay, maybe they give it to a debt collector. But I guess what I'd like to ask you is for authority to just consider taking the measures that I need to either threaten them or attach them to the lawsuit in order that we get reimbursed. So that's, I would like to seek approval for that probably at the next meeting, but I just want to let you know what's going on.
I wanted to say something. After we spoke about that, I talked with Cory, and there are two separate items.
Okay. Well, do we, well, let's talk about that. In that case, let's talk about that privately after the meeting. All right. That's all I've got.
It did seem that way, though.
Okay.
Is that it, councillor?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Much to approve. Second. Thank you all.